Good morning. It's very dark over here. Sorry. Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. On February 16th, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Can I get a motion to-
Motion to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, who's recording this besides the camera? Because Brady's not here and Bev is off. Before we get too far into this-
Hold this.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back to stand.
All right.
I can take minutes, but I do need to add one item.
What? I'm sorry, were you not listening?
We need to add Carla Hill's resignation underneath Molly's business.
Molly's business, add D.
D.
Carla Hill. Okay, so we are adding under number six, Molly Hickon, County Attorney, item D, Carla Hill. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second. Just to keep it the same as the first one. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You second it, now I'm taking this one.
It's Mo and Seaberton on both items.
Try to keep that up for you.
And we have public comment at this point, and there's no public. Technically, we're supposed to start in seven minutes, so if anyone comes in and seems like they need to urgently speak to us, we will take them away to listen if they're here. Consent agenda, is there anything to pull?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pull the C and pull E.
Okay, so we're pulling C and E. Anything else to pull? Can I get a motion to approve A, B, D, and S?
So move.
Mo and Seaberton, any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item C, Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, that's the county board of appeals date that we need to set. I don't know that he necessarily needs to be here, but because there wasn't a date suggested, it was up to us to make a determination, we need to have a discussion on it. And typically, we've had it on a Tuesday evening. It has to be after the 10th of June, so I'd suggest either the 14th or the 21st, depending upon what works, what we've got going.
June or 10th of April?
June.
Is it June?
June.
Yeah, he put on here, determine what it is, but he already highlighted it for us. Does anyone have a conflict on June 10th that you know of this far in advance in your life? Well, you don't know.
Sure gonna have a date.
So June 10th, and we usually do it in the heat maybe.
You mean, yeah. In the con.
Yep.
Six o'clock.
6:00 PM, June 10th. Anyone like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for that if Jeff wants a chance to name them. Got it.
And a second? Second. Commissioner Storley? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the next item is E, Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, just wanted to, um, he's really good.
Yes. Jeff is taking notes.
There was a way to know.
I usually try to run down it, I don't know, but-
Well, there's no, to give those sounds, we're still talking about that.
Our administrator said we could give you a shot call.
We do have a cry room.
We can talk to Oriole about a lot, if you need to have it come right into your office, and then, you know. Do you want a word packet? So Brady, we pulled item number E from the consent agenda.
I didn't realize that. I was rushing it, isn't it?
And so we're looking at item E, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, my question just had to do on the agreement as to the promotional grant contracts, that the two questions is, one is that 75 percent of the monies then are provided, and the other 25 percent, is that just coming out of the-
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah. And those just come out of levy dollars, or?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question was that if the conditions of payment is based upon, you know, performance evaluation, the state authorized representative, is that in the past, have we received these funds?
Yeah, we've been receiving them since before I came here in 91. The only difference this year is, I think it's a few hundred dollars more than, previous year it was 24,000, it's been 24 for 20 some years, and they upped it a little bit, a few hundred dollars.
And so then, the, you know, receiving these grant funds, part of the criteria is that the, that there will be a performance evaluation, and she comes up-
I think the airport board does that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to know how that had worked relative to compliance with the funding of the monies.
Here's the evaluation that the airport board does do this Thursday. So we are staying on track there.
All right, that's it.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve E?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I forgot to tell Tim that we were ahead of schedule. He's got someone in his office right now.
All right, I'm gonna go over that, but you know that she doesn't need to come.
He must have asked her about this issue of setting the meeting.
It's 5:45, so.
Yeah.
I run back about six times in this place.
Okay. Brady, do you want to do date for public hearing? Since we're ahead.
Sure. This is a request for changes to the fee schedule, and it was, right now, it's just the community center that had a request. They were, they had to meet, so they couldn't meet our last public hearing, because they haven't met yet. But the request would be to set it out, I think, at least by the end of March, would give other departments, if they had, change microphone, a chance to come bring in.
March 22nd?
Sure.
10:00 AM is when we usually do it. Oh, yeah, that's the third one. About 9:00 AM. Soon as we get done here, so we don't have to sit here for an hour looking at the clock. Let's do-
You guys don't kind of roll in here.
Right, oh, let's do 9:00 AM. Yeah, that'll throw the viewers off.
The task after that, can't be on the table.
We'll address that later. So we have March 22nd, 9:00 AM, for public hearing on fee changes. Can I get a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Tim Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning. The first item that I have before you is actually looking for an appointment for the, basically, it's a septic appeal panel, and this is something that we had adopted last year into the ordinance, and it didn't make it into the organizational meeting, it should have been. But there's a process of administrative appeals that we put into the ordinance, the septic ordinance, as kind of a preliminary before somebody would have to go before the full-blown Board of Adjustment. And so, we would look for, basically, one commissioner to serve on the panel, and then one to serve as an alternate to that.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that both you and Commissioner Mo are on the septic advisory, Commissioner Mo, that in that regard, I would suggest that Commissioner Mo, if he's willing, would sit on that, with Commissioner DuKirk being alternate.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair. So in the advisory committee, we discussed this, and we figured that Commissioner DuKirk and I would be logical choices. We, I would request that there be an alternate, and that Commissioner DuKirk is the alternate then, because the first, the first, there's, let's say this, there will be a likelihood that one of us and will have a conflict of interest in most of these cases, so having both of us as, one of us just sitting on that committee at a time, depending upon who comes before it, I think would be very good.
And Madam Chair, and my recommendation is based on just continuity relative to the issues that have been dealt with, it makes sense.
Sure. I'd be glad to serve on that.
Commissioner Seaberton, any comment?
I'm in favor of that.
Commissioner Storley?
Sounds good.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Commissioner Mo is the designated with Commissioner DuKirk as alternate.
And a second, please? A second. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Okay, thank you. The next item is actually a culmination of a lot of work that we have tried to do also through the septic ordinance process, and that is, we've always been wrestling with this one provision in the, in the septic rules, Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7082, and that's a requirement that all new lots being created have the septic sites identified for two type-one treatment systems. And given the geology and geography of our county, that's been difficult in cases to be able to achieve two type-one systems. When we initially adopted our new ordinance in 2014, we actually put in their language having one type-one and one type-three, and we figured that was a good enough compromise that the PCA, at the time when they were working with us, did not have any objections to that. Subsequently, they did have objections to that, and we tried to work with the PCA by filing for a variance from that particular provision specific to our county, and they felt that there wasn't enough supporting documentation to warrant a county-wide variance, and so they fell back and wanted to have, if we were going to deal with each one of these, to do so on a case-by-case basis. We felt it important and necessary through the septic advisory committee, and also through the Environmental Health Department, that as this is kind of a common thing, that we wouldn't want to really backlog all of these particular cases through a regular variance process, which would entail a public hearing, public notice, all of this stuff, for each one of these cases, but that we could work through an administrative variance-type process. I actually submitted out a poll across the state, the various counties, to see if this is being done, and I did receive comments back from a number of counties. Basically, a third of those that responded indicated that they do exercise some type of administrative variance, none of them specific to this particular provision, but most of them did have to do with septic systems in one form or fashion. So I informally spoke with the PCA pollution control folks with regards to whether they would have any objections to us utilizing this type of approach, and in fact, they favored it. They said it's good, it would at least give every case an individual review and look, but that it didn't have to be such a cumbersome process to be a public hearing for each one. So they are, they would be satisfied with the language that we do have. So we formulated some language, we took it and discussed it with the septic advisory committee last week, and the consensus of the committee that was there, basically, was to move ahead, recommend this language to the Board of Commissioners, so that we can take this language now and go out on public hearing, and go through a regular ordinance amendment process, and that would be in March, if I got to go ahead at this point. And the public hearing would be with the Planning Commission.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tim, for this. A good solution to a frustrating issue. I think I would ask for the Board's support. It will allow people who are trying to subdivide property to do it in a way it's not compromising in any way our county's ability to protect water quality, it's just expediting the process a bit, so people can actually subdivide property and then ultimately build on it, or whoever they sell it to builds upon it. So I completely support it. I would ask Tim, just really quick, to go through, just tell us specifically the process that somebody would be going through who wants to apply for this variance, and then the fee, we talked about a fee, what that would be for the variance request.
Okay, Commissioner Mo, or Madam Chair, Commissioner Mo. The process would be basically an administrative process, and as you can see by the language that I had presented before you, it essentially reverts the requirement back to the two type-one systems, and then designates an administrative process that is allowed for people to go ahead for that one specific provision. And they basically would contact, anybody that's interested in subdividing property would normally contract with a septic contractor to identify systems, and parts of the checks and balances in this is the fact that it is in anybody's interest to get as good of a system as possible identified on their properties, because that increases the value of the lot, is to have good and adequate septic treatment systems identified. So they would run through that process to get whatever sites that they can get identified on there. One of the, one of the issues, too, is that in our particular county, there are some people that actually want to live off the grid, and they want to have as minimal a type of requirements as possible, and this, this type of provision would allow them to be able to have that, but they're not bound to that. And that's one of the, one of the real nice flexible things on there, is that they would get a contractor to approach the property, identify some systems, and then the property owner would apply to our office to have that, this variance in place for that. We would take the information provided by the contractor, and Mitch would review that and say, okay, yes, I concur that these systems are there, and we would ask for them to be staked out and such, do just a field site verification of whatever sites are identified, and then, then go ahead and approve the variance. And the thing is with this, is that it would then get recorded on the deed, all variances are recorded on the deed. And so, at that point, what it does do is it identifies and lets those systems identify the kind of use that would be allowable, or the intensity of the use that would be allowable on that particular parcel. However, it's not restricted to that. That is only for the creation of the lot. So we would verify at the creation of the lot that those type of systems are available, but if somebody later on purchases the lot and wants to have a bigger system than that, or some other type of system, then they would go through just the normal review process, and at that point, any type of system can be identified, so long as it meets in with the code and then the standards at that point. So it is just an administrative process that would be applied through our Environmental Health Office, and then would be approved and recorded. And the fee that we had discussed is, basically, it would be, the regular variance fee is $300 at this point, which entails a public hearing and all of that. We would want to cut that to, essentially, the consideration was doing it to $100 plus the recording fee. So if we set that at $150, because the recording fee is just about $50, so we're looking at setting the fee at about $150, which is half the fee, or half the cost of what the regular variance fee would be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim, given that the MPCA rejected a language that was in our septic ordinance, initially it came back, we discussed this before the Board, gave authorization, recommendation to go ahead, and drafted in the provision that they did allow for us. Has the MPCA approved this language?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, they, we have not gone through a formal process for that at this point, because I wanted the Board to be able to look and have us go through that process. As we go through the public hearing process, at that point, we will provide the language to the Pollution Control Agency, but I have had the informal discussions that, with regards to this language, and they have run that all the way up through the channels that would do the approving, and they have tentatively, in an informal basis, said, yes, they do approve with the language that we are looking at.
Madam Chair, and Tim, just, just as a matter of protocol, how this normally would proceed, it would just seem that if we go to a public hearing, the public's under the assumption that we've, you know, crossed our Ts, dotted our Is, and they're just affirming, you know, something that, and that we would then adopt. But given your experience, if the MPCA has, in theory, said, yes, this is the provision that we suggested to you, we just haven't reviewed the language specifically, if the assurances are that it will be adopted, you know, following the procedure of public hearing, then-
They agreed to adopt our last-
Yeah.
They might not change their mind.
Six months later, they came back and said, oh, never mind.
That is correct. They had no objections to our initial language. And it was, it wasn't six months, it was a year afterwards that they decided that they-
I'm glad that the MPCA, at this point in time, has advised us, and we've taken their recommendations and put into the language to be in compliance with their advice, and therefore, we can move forward.
That they will then, in a year, tell us it's not.
We don't want to say that, we're trying to grease the shoe here.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm all for moving forward, and especially to have public meeting for them to have the education on this. What time is it on March 9th?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seaberton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Tim, for hanging in there through all of these steps, and as we know, or just discussing, this may not be the end, but we're moving down the road. So what we're doing today is just to hold a public hearing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Seaberton, yeah, from today, I would be looking at consensus or motion or whatever from the Board to direct me to proceed to go to the public hearing with this, which would be held at the Planning Commission in March, yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion to authorize Mr. Nelson to post a notice and proceed to public hearing on Wednesday, March 9th, at 5:00 PM regarding the proposed administrative variance language for the Cook County septic ordinance.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
And just for the staff to be aware, Commissioner Mo brought up, we will be at AMC on March 10th and 11th, so-
It starts in the morning of the 10th.
Morning of the 10th, yeah. But we usually don't have a quorum of commissioners at the planning and zoning meeting, even when we have public hearings. I'll be here, because I love to drive to the cities in the dark and play with the deer on the road, with the county car.
Thank you for the warning.
Anything else, Tim?
I would add, Madam Chair, that this is non-controversial in terms of our particular county, so I don't, I don't expect a lot of real discussion on that.
No, you're putting a nail in the coffin.
Yeah.
You're putting that in bold.
That's right.
With an LED illuminated sign. Betty will take you after Bill, he's got one, one item. Mr. Lane? Enlighten us.
Enlighten? That's a tall order.
Well, you're talking about illumination.
Yes, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you probably surmised, this is a conditional use permit request that was forwarded to the Board of Commissioners from the Planning Commission. And in essence, this is really the tail wagging the dog, the tail being modern inventions, illuminations, displays, and the dog being sign ordinance number 53. And to clarify, the light emitting diodes, which are the LED displays, which you're seeing more and more, can be highly effective energy-wise and display-wise, but they can also be extremely bright, and they're the, the modern advertisement display that's in vogue now. You see them in the cities, or in Grand Marais, Bucks has a scrolling marquee, which is, I don't know what its function is, other than it's a scrolling marquee, it's hard to read, because the display is so small, it's, you know, you have to hook on phonics to figure out what they're advertising. So in 2014, Clearview Store in Lutzen came in with a request to transition from their internal illumination, which is basically the translucent board with fluorescent light or an incandescent light, and they went over to an LED display. So that kind of set the precedent for LED displays, and that was approved, even though we didn't have any reference to LED displays in the ordinance, so-
I need to make a point, Madam Chair. I just want to comment, I don't, I'm guessing you have feelings about the Bucks Hardware sign, though I don't think editorializing here about that is appropriate.
I apologize, it wasn't my intent to editorialize. So anyways, to get back to Clearview, the sign was approved, and even though we didn't have that firm link between the allowance and the ordinance, so what's transpired in the last year and a half is that the sign committee process has been engaged, and we're at the point now of having a new sign ordinance, which will be presented to the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners in the immediate future. And it does have reference to the LED displays, so it's a step in the right direction. Lockport, if you've driven up the shore, you know where Lockport is, it's been in that location for almost 100 years now, and it's served a viable function for both commercial and tourism activities, and Nan and Deb would have been here today, but they had an appointment in Duluth today. So the issue became, they lost their spur distributor and went over to Calumet, which is the same that Bucks Hardware has, gas distributor, and one of their requirements for the new franchise was that they had to update their sign, and that sign has to include the LED display. So Nan and Deb were able to convince Calumet that they didn't need to change the facade of the sign, which is important, they wanted to continue to put the little hand-placed letters and messages there, and so the LED display will be below that. And so it's not really an affront to, to the business or anything like that, it'll modernize it, and it'll be a nice display. I mean, that's, that's kind of what the indications are from Nan and Deb. Calumet wanted them to do a little more visual, but they opted to keep it conservative, they're very large adherents to night sky illumination, and the nice thing about the display is that when Lockport isn't open, the display will be off. And as a follow-up to that, MnDOT, Wayne Scherer from Minnesota Department of Transportation contacted me and said that he has no problems with the sign, that their only concern from a MnDOT perspective is safety, and that if the lights are too bright, they'll just go in and ask that they be turned down. So it's, that's a good interaction for us to have with MnDOT, simply because they typically just go do it without contacting us, so I think that's a step in the right direction. As far as the Planning Commission goes, there was, there was pretty much unanimous support for the transition over to LED displays, mindful that it will come with the new ordinance. So it was approved unanimously, and forwarded to you for your consideration today.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Seaberton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Bill, and I was at the meeting, so I witnessed directly the discussion, and it seemed very favorable, and I've also, over the years, have sat on many sign ordinance, or been a part of conversations, sat on a sign ordinance committee in Duluth, and it's just really interesting how, you know, it's so flows with fashion. fashion. And I just remember, like, 20 years ago, the serious concern was neon. And then it was, okay, so neon came in, and then it was neon moving. And so that, you know, is here now, and it really didn't turn us into Las Vegas. It didn't turn us into all these horrible things we imagined. So it's such a, it's an emotional, subjective kind of conversation, but it's also valid to think of aesthetics when doing Sign Ordinances and so forth. So I'm very much in favor of approving this request. And the LED, so my one question or thought about the LED piece, because I know there's been a lot of concerns, because they're a lot brighter. Can you really see that? I mean, how do you, you'd have to have like a picture of an LED next to a picture of a...
ATV sign on the gunfight? Those are pretty bright.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, these are all important considerations. The only, actually, the Brian Hansel, I'm sure everybody got the Brian Hansel email, which went into great detail about, which I haven't read totally yet, but just for the Sign Ordinance sake, there might be some aesthetic tweaking. I don't know if you want to, it might be just good information for people to read before they do these signs. But I also realize that corporate Calumets and corporate Spurs and corporate Holiday Stations kind of dictate these things, which was the real issue 20 years ago here in Grand Marais. We were trying to keep our cool, unique status, and we've been able to maintain that, even though we weren't able to eliminate interlit signs. So the beat goes on. We're still good. Night Sky is protected with this. I just, I feel, there's a lot of words to say. I'm in favor of this. Just one question. So the piece about MinDOT possibly asking them to turn it down, I realize that that was brought up at the meeting as well, could that be an issue for them? I mean, is it easy for them to turn the light down? Or do they have to purchase all new lights? I mean, how much of a concern should that be for them?
Commissioner Severson, that's a good point, and it was one of the discussion topics at the Planning Commission meeting. It isn't a big issue at all, and primarily because LED displays do have dimmer switches.
Dimmer switches.
So you can go, I mean, and you can get them extremely bright. I think it's a 20-fold increase in brightness from the lowest setting to the highest setting. So what Wayne Scherer from MinDOT suggested was that if a trooper, a state trooper, were to see a display and deem it subjectively that it may be too bright, he would go in and talk to the property owner and ask them to turn it down. Now, that's, again, subjective, and one of the discussion points, again, at the Planning Commission meeting was, how can we effectively measure brightness and make that a part of the permitting process? And there's got to be some sort of light meter or some display meter that would read the brightness, and from that, we could set thresholds, but we don't have access to that now. I'm assuming that at some point, that would probably be an amendment to the new Sign Ordinance and include that into the process.
Thank you.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, being a part of the new Sign Ordinance, it's good that we are in the process of updating everything, because from 1997 until now, a lot of things have changed and probably will change. I have had an ongoing conversation with Deb and Nan, and this wasn't their choice to do this type of sign, but because they were forced into it, they're definitely, you know, not going to have it on after 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night. The neighbors, as far as I know, have not objected. In fact, there was a letter of support from the owner of Clearview, because they'd already gone through this with the Clearview sign. The signpost is really quite high, too, so I can't imagine that, as you're driving along, the impact of a sign light up here to a car down here is going to be a big impact, but we don't know until it is lit and just see, you know, the impact there on that. But no, I think they are very, they, Deb and Nan, are very aware of the whole situation, and certainly are more than willing to dim it if it is a little bit too bright. I would be in favor, yes.
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment, as far as measuring it, when it comes to sound, if we, you know, measure decibel, I believe, you know, relative to light, that you can measure the lumens as to, you know, what it is, whether or not we would get, you know, that sophisticated. I think the capacity to be able to adjust it, should it be an issue, is something that might be there. But I don't know. Again, being part of the Sign Ordinance Committee, I don't think that we had talked about, you know, measuring device relative to how we measure our light and things like that, had to do with a number of other issues. But otherwise, ready to support.
Commissioner Moll?
Madam Chair, no questions. I would just make a motion to approve the Lockport conditional use permit request.
Can I get a second?
Support.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
And then, we are putting Betty in here quickly, just for the Commissioners, the item C on the consent agenda. We need to revisit that.
So, Madam Chair, I make the original motion?
Yes.
No, not on, no, it was Gamble and Storley.
Yeah, Gamble and Storley.
Okay.
Okay, Betty, please explain to us. Apparently, we messed up.
Good morning. The summary I have is just a guideline from the Department of Revenue, but the one thing, the most important is, it has to be after the 2nd Friday in June. So if you choose a date after that time, it's acceptable. So last year, the County Board of Appeal and Equalization date was June 16, which was a Tuesday. So if you would just choose one of those days, and please allow for anything that may come up after that date, too. So if we have to reconvene or...
So what we did was, we looked at it in the consent agenda, and I'm sorry, Betty, it probably shouldn't have even been in the consent agenda. So we picked the date as June 10, which is the 2nd Friday. So it has to be after that?
Correct.
So if we follow suit of what we've done in past years, we've done it the Tuesday after, which would be June 14 at 6:00 PM. Is there any conflict with anyone doing it at that date? Commissioner Moll?
Madam Chair, I would ask the Board to consider a Wednesday or a Thursday. It seems to me that Tuesdays can often get very long, and we get...
That's my EDA, so I go from here to EDA to here.
Yeah. And not that we couldn't accomplish that, but we'd like, it'd be nice for us to be as well rested and focused as we can be at this important meeting. So I would ask that we consider doing it on a Wednesday or a Thursday.
And Wednesday of that week is Planning and Zoning, so it could be Thursday.
Wednesday is a problem. So maybe Thursday.
Is everyone available on Thursday, the 16th?
16th.
Um, I may not be available, but you'll have plenty of other people here.
We've got other days we can choose.
We have...
Friday, the 17th? I know Commissioner Gamble's out of town for...
Yeah, usually have... We have 10 days that we need, you know, so it has to be 10. That's 10.
The 24th. Right, by the 24th, we have to have a meeting?
So 10 business days?
I would ask that it wouldn't be that late, in case we have to reconvene. You'd have to have everything wrapped up by the 30th, so...
And this is where we go with the Olympic-length Tuesday.
But so, will you know, Madam Chair, relatively soon?
My airport meeting is on the 3rd Thursday, which is the 16th. So it starts at 5:00, 5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00.
So we're not on Tuesday?
Tuesday's Flag Day.
I know it's tough.
How about Monday?
Monday, the 13th at 6:00. Is everyone available on the 13th at 6:00?
Does that work for you, Commissioner?
I guess so at this point. I mean, usually, I have meetings during the day and not in the evening on Monday. So I'd be willing to amend my motion to Monday, June 13 at 6:00 PM.
And Commissioner Storley, you were second. Are you accepting the amended?
Yes.
Okay. So we have an amended date set for June 13 at 6:00 PM, which is a Monday, instead of June 10, the Friday. We have a motion to second. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Betty.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Jeff, are you taking over Molly's section, or do you want me to move on to Brady?
Uh, move on to Brady. Molly will be here. She had something to mount.
Okay. Brady, we have general fund budget review.
This is the quarterly review. Not sure what you have in your packet, but...
We have very small printed numbers.
Yeah, I think you get printed the first page both times, twice.
We have two first pages.
Yeah. So here's...
Oh, just the whole?
Well, that's the whole shebang, and then this is just...
There's no, there's no summary.
I only made a few of those, but here's those that don't get that. This is the second page that you did not get.
Okay. So you can put it all together.
Yeah.
We can, some of us will put it all together.
You can have a whole or...
We can have two pages, or three pages.
The same is...
That's got highlights on it for us.
Yeah, I love the highlights.
Everybody got a copy?
Mm-hmm.
All right, very helpful. This is helpful.
Get that one.
It says, "Tell us the good, bad, and ugly about..."
I'll just, yeah. I'll just give you a few comments and ask any questions. But starting down the line, first page, Department 10, Court Administration, and you can see that's significantly over the budgeted $25,000. It's at $33,000. And that's those court-ordered CHIPS case, child protection cases. So we don't have any choice on that. It's just whether we guessed correctly or not. The Department 41, General Finance Administration, we budgeted a transfer of $77,000 to the Highway Department, and you can see it's over $50,000, so that accounts for that. That was part of our budget. It was a budgeted transfer, but it actually goes through the books as an expense. You see here. The Assessor's Office, just note that it's at 88% of expenditures. The personnel is low this year. They were filling positions. And Data Processing, 108%, and that's some changes in the professional service, the costs with MCAT. Elections, that's always either under or over, because we budget consistently, even though we have an election every other year. Administrator, if you look way over to the right, you see that's at 66% Administrator Department, and that's because we didn't have an Administrator for the first six months. Down to Court House Operations, slightly over at 103%. That's Professional Services, which was primarily snow plowing, and the repairs budget were a little bit high. Dropping down to Emergency Management, 280. Well, I'll start, I'll go back to Radio Communications was at 78%. Their professional fees were much lower than the budgeted amount. Then the next is County Jail, 105%, and that's, as we've seen for the last several years, that's inmate boarding. Expenses were higher than expected. And then down to Department 280, Emergency Management, is at 118%, but if you look over, and that's $16,000 over in expenditures due to the IEMC Conference and grant portage. But you'll also look over there and see that the actual revenues on the far left-hand side, $39,000, exceeded the budgeted revenues of $16,000 by at least the amount of the conference, so that's paid. Department 390, Environmental Health, is at 103%. Just note that the revenues are low also. Department 394 is significantly over 109%, and that was due to the work on the Land Use Guide Plan, which was unbudgeted. Dropping down to the Community Center, now, they were low this year. The Utilities were low, and the repairs were low, 83%. Parks and Rec is over, and that was due to the Holden Project ongoing. And that's essentially the end of the operating budgeted accounts. And then if you look at the bottom of the page, that's a heavy black line, you'll see Departments 61, 64, 92, 101, 201, those are all grant departments or cash balance departments. So they do not affect the budget. So if you look on the second page at the bottom, you'll see, once we've adjusted for those cash departments and grant departments, our expenditures are at 99.2%, and our revenues are a little bit over by 103%. So that proves a good reason.
Would you like us to take a moment to do the discussion, Brady?
Sure.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, so in cash dollars, that revenue being 103.9 and expenses being 99.2, what is that? How much is that? But that's not a final number?
No, that's not even close. It just gives you kind of an idea of how it might end up, because everything is, this is all cash basis.
Right.
And there's lots of adjustments from the end of '14 and then the end of '15, and they're not done yet. So we don't really know.
The '15 budget will be with us for years.
So will the '14.
We will have done our adjustments by the end of March, for all receivables and payables that come in after. And then, as far as our fund balance total, it used to be pretty much that simple, as the accruals, which expenditures really belong to '15, which revenue really belongs to 2015. But since that changed a few years ago, now also has to value our investments, you know, $10 million in investments and how they value as of the end of the year. And so that throws a big kink into making a guess as to how our fund balance is going to turn out. So we really only get that snapshot when all the adjustments are made, and we get all of those changes to our investment valuations, and we get that once-a-year snapshot. And other than that, we look at payables in and out and get a good sense of how we're doing, which seems we're on budget at least.
What's our fund balance at?
It depends on which fund balance.
Are we below 75% on our general?
Well, we're just above it. This is the last audit. I think we were about 77%. So we won't know that snapshot again for a few months.
Madam Chair, but...
But it looks like we're going to be on.
It looks like that that's probably not going to go down if this holds true.
Looks like it. And we'll have that number before we start budgeting again.
Sure.
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some things in reviewing this. Given the decision that we made, you know, some time back, relative to how we operate on our fee structure to the coroner, I'm just wondering if that 67%, which is line 206, whether that reflects the new charge arrangement, or if it's just relative to the number of...
I think it's just relative to number of cases.
Number of cases, yeah.
Because each one are several thousand dollars, so that far trumps any fee change.
And then, the County Jail, line 250, are transporting costs included in that, or is that just simply...
Yeah.
It is. Okay. And I guess my question, and I see Pats here, is that when we made the purchase of the transport... the transport vehicle, at the time we were discussing that, we were looking at a vehicle where, through that discussion, we were bringing down male offenders, female offenders. Now we purchased a vehicle where we have the option of transporting both at the same time, and I'm wondering if that, I mean, if you were to track that and look at that, you would be able to see whether or not there's going to be economies of scale which might affect this number.
Yeah, hopefully by next year budget time, we'll have a good sense of that, and it might change the budget for next year, so.
Yeah. And then the, under 390, which is Environmental Health, the revenues that, in that department, where do those revenues come from?
I don't have a full list. I think they have more than one, but I don't have that.
Like in the Recorder's Office, we see that, you know, there's a down 200 revenues, and it's relative to limited activity, and so...
Yeah. I'll ask that question.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to see what influences that.
See what can be answered.
And Planning and Zoning, you answered the question there, that it was unbudgeted, otherwise if we knew what the budget was. But I, I think, given the fact that it took us as much time as we did, the facilitator, those ongoing costs...
Yeah, we had to stop the process and add a couple of dates, so that's what happened with that one.
Yeah. And then under, well, the Parks and Recs, we see what that is. You said ongoing, but I think the decisions that we've made to that point as to what we do to allocate funds for the Holden Project, that...
Yeah. I think they'll finish up this spring, I presume, or so.
Did we budget some of that in '14?
Yeah, we did.
'14?
Yeah. Painting and some other things that we did.
Yes, Jan made requests.
The other thing I guess I would note up here is under line 018, which is the Law Library, that it, it appears that that budget there is 7,673. And I think there's another, another situation as to monies in that account, because you're going to be bringing up a request here, and I think according to 2015 Budget Review, 7,673 under budget, that that would be monies in that account for Law Library.
Yeah, that, it stays there, so...
So when we're looking at a request that will come before us here, 6,150, and normally our request would say, is there monies provided for that? If this, this is, this is a cost that's going to be split, but I'm getting into something that we'll revisit when we get to what you've got under.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure if that indicates a long-term trend because of the changes in how that information, we don't buy books to the extent that we're used to, it's online.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll address that when we get to that, then. Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is about the, I really have just one question, and it's more of a question of understanding, about the land use guide plan being unbudgeted. And I, we probably don't have the details, but just out of curiosity, what, does anybody have any idea what that whole process costs as a project?
We can ask Tim.
Yeah.
To sum that in, because we've budgeted 56,000, and we budgeted a certain number of meetings and to be done within a certain amount of time.
So it's all based on the consultants?
Yep.
And, and so this 29, do you think, do you think it's totally attributed to that?
I...
We don't know.
I haven't analyzed it to a degree, but...
Just curious.
Yeah. We'll put that down.
It's just good to know so that, you know, know. But, and I also believe that in the future, we will have to be waiting 20, almost 20 years to update or...
We're going to do more, yeah.
Yeah.
Tim did mention that to the Planning Commission more, that there will be more earlier reviews of it.
Sustaining a good plan will be lot, much less costly, and it'll be just better for everybody.
Yeah, I talked to Tim about that when I first looked it over, and I think he's ready for that question, we will be shortly.
And then, since we're always asking Brady, where does it come from and where does it go? I mean, everybody check registers that start out with our levy amount at the beginning of this year, and we can sit and write notes to ourselves and put it, if it's in our hours...
Like a piggy bank deal.
I wish you'd put it in QuickBooks or something.
I tried, but not everybody uses a computer.
Well, I do, but I just don't use it here.
No, right. And so you couldn't access it. So you can put it in there, you can put notes where, where it comes from, and we started the year out in the negative, but we'll change that.
Thank you.
We get unexpected opportunities, like we have on here, where our fund balance is ahead.
Compared to my present balance at Holmes.
Take a couple zeros off. Carrie, you have another question?
Oh, no, just a motion to approve the general fund balance review for the period ending, December 31st, 2015.
Can I get a second?
Commissioner Severson?
Split.
No, Commissioner Storley? But Commissioner Mo did have further discussions.
Yeah, just, just a question again, then. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we, how much again would that be for the, just, you know, since this is, since this is kind of a hypothetical tool here.
It's a hypothetical tool.
You know, so if we, if we're looking at about approximately a 4% increase in the, if this, if this snapshot were to hold true, which we know will get adjusted, but say it were to hold true, a 4% budget surplus into the levy balance would be approximately how much?
Into the fund balance?
Into the fund balance.
Do you think this will shake out as far as being able to...
Well, and that all depends on where we want to hold it. When we do the budget for '17, if we say we want it at 75% instead of 77, then we're going to add that 2% in.
It's just in years when we've seen that we don't know until the end of the cycle what's going to be there to put back in, and that's the question that Commissioner Mo's asking.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't even know if that would be helpful, because if you look at our trial balance every month, it jumps back and forth, so you could make that kind of an estimate pretty constantly, and it depends on how many bills we got in at the end of December, and that varies from year to year, and how much of the revenues we got in.
I'm not going to ask you to spend it. I'm just wondering, 4% of our budget that, that this number is reflecting to is about how much? Is that what we're talking, oh, you got that right there, the two, so we're, that's about, about $208,000.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't believe that for a minute, there was that positive on it.
How's that make you feel?
Confident that's not an accurate number.
Madam Chair, that may be a good question.
Even some things are, you know, you can get a pretty good estimate of by looking at them like that. I don't think this is one of them, other than a generality that I don't think we're going to come too far, too far beyond what our budget was. That's as far as I can go on.
Thank you, Brady. And then to that point, then, if we're hypothetically, maybe this, in this number, if this were true, this would be 208,000 to the positive. Commissioner Dukeirk has provided us a checkbook balance of negative $92,000, so really, we don't know if this is true or this is true.
Well, the 92 is true because we agreed to levy that in 2017.
We agreed to...
Levy the 92,000. That's where I have the number from. We agreed that we could spend it this year, and we levied for it in '17, to make it up.
Well, yeah, that's a discussion.
That's a discussion.
Well, we did.
We're starting already. I would ask the question, Brady, that the, in, in the years, you know, that you did honor to treasure, what has your experience? We've had this discussion before as to what we've seen, usually it ends up being, and, and that would probably be qualified in the changing economic environment where we're in.
In past years, that question wasn't asked, so I'd want some time to look at it, to provide some historical context, which I do don't have right now.
Carrie.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is that all you have for us, Brady?
That's all I have.
Okay, we will move on to Molly.
Can we adjust the order of my items, because I, I see that Sue and Pat are here, and I think they're here to talk about the equipment, and Rena, for the recording of victim witness interviews.
So you want to move, you want to start with C?
I want to start with C.
Okay, and since you weren't here, we added item D.
I saw that.
Okay. So we will start with C. Do you want your posse to come forward?
I don't, I don't. I don't think they need to unless they want to hype up.
Okay, we'll just swing the camera around a little bit when we get to it. I didn't say that, Rena did.
So the reason that representatives from four departments are here for this agenda item, Rena was playing a role of assisting us in getting the equipment and urging us to get some policy in place about that equipment. And the, the recording of child interviews, children who are victims of crimes or have witnessed crimes, is an important function for my office for prosecution of crimes and advising Public Health and Human Services. It's important for Sue's department in investigating child protection claims, and it's important for Pat's department in investigating crimes and supporting the child protection team. So basically, this is a request to replace the equipment. There is an error in my request from time in front of the board. I said the equipment is more than seven years old. I think it's actually about 17 years old, was purchased in 99 or 2000, I believe. And we recently found out that it's not functioning correctly. It's not providing a good video audio. So we're asking to replace it. We have one quote, there should have been another one come in this week, and I'm not sure if Kirk has that or not. We anticipate that it would be, that the cost of this equipment would be less than $5,000. We're asking to split that expense between, among the three departments. And you see a quote attached for $2,093.81. We anticipate it would cost that plus the expense of a new laptop and power supply or something similar for about $11.50. So I can take any questions?
We'll start with Commissioner Severson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I wouldn't even know how to ask a question, but I know that this is a piece of equipment that's really, really, really needed, so I'm, I just want to say that I'm very much in support, just as we needed to replace the cameras in an emergency basis in the, at the Law Enforcement Center, we need to replace it.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think after 17 years, it is time.
Yeah.
Especially on sensitive things like with children, really needs to be official that, that what they've said, we have heard. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, and when it comes to equipment and, and we see Kevin around doing cabling or whatever, in our claims that came through, we had charges for cabling that's done, and I don't know what cabling is cabling that we're paying out for and what cabling, you know, is Kevin is capable of handling. I guess my question's relative to this equipment, where, number one, if there's any trade-in value, and at that point I was looking at a seven-year, now I'm looking at a 17, there isn't, pay somebody to take it. The other is if any of the cabling is salvageable, and again, the technology given 17 years ago, that's probably not, so that only leaves me, the one, which is whether or not our staff is capable of doing any of this. 38% of the quote that we're looking at is, is labor, and if that, that labor is something that we're not capable either because of workload or technology, I don't know, but that, that's a question I, I had.
So, so this is not a computer system per se. This is really a camera and an audio recorder. It will not be on our network, so the cabling that Kevin's doing is not involved with this at all. It's, it's an installation of a camera and an audio system, so could our staff do it? I don't, I don't really have a good answer for that, but I think we want to make sure that the setup in the room is, meets the, the need for, for this particular thing. And so I, I think, personally, I think the, the quote is very reasonable for what it is, and, but I don't, I don't really see this as equipment that my staff manages in any way.
Okay. And the installations that we've done with security cameras and things have all been...
Those have all been done by vendors as well.
Yeah.
Security cameras.
And if the quote here, and the, you know, on the camera and the installation, everything that we're looking at, lest the tax here, you know, is, is going to be under 2,000, and then you add in the computer, well, that 5,000 threshold is something that is, is in the motion. If we, if we understand this quote plus the laptop to be what it is, it theoretically could be, it's under 4,000.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so just for my information, then, who, who is the, for our audiovisual equipment, then, is it, it seems like you or Kevin, you know, because you're close, usually end up coming in and trying to figure it out for us here, but...
That's, that's true, and that, that does, we, we do have a role in that, certainly in this room and for ITV room and that sort of thing, but most, most of those things, not the audiovisual in this room, but, and we did get called into this one as well, but we, we did come in and help organize the quote and work with the vendor and that sort of thing, but it's not equipment that generally speaking, we'd support.
Madam Chair, so you might, you might be the first point of contact to look at to see what the needs might be, and then, and then would call in specialists.
And Molly, Molly mentioned that we had talked about process a little bit more, you know, and when this system wasn't working well, you know, members of my staff were being called in to help set it up and review tapes, and I kind of went, you know, really IT staff shouldn't be reviewing tapes of sensitive nature like that. So we talked about putting processes in place to minimize the involvement of my staff with the day-in, day-out operations. Certainly, if there's a technical problem, they would be the first line to come up, but in terms of an operational piece, this is a very self-contained thing that should not involve IT on a very daily basis because of the sensitive nature of the information.
And, and the reality is that you're a backlog of work for your staff currently?
You know, we're, we're doing okay.
And, and the last question, Madam Chair, would be, and the, how long do you think it would take to have this equipment functional?
I don't think it takes very long, once we accept it. They, they said they could be here in March, was that right?
I think, I think they said like March 20th is the earliest that they could install, and I would presume, just by the nature of the equipment, which I think is fairly straightforward, it would be operational with the, with a left, that phase.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would, I would move to authorize the purchase and payment for installation of equipment for the recording of the child victim and, and witness interviews, not to exceed $5,000.
Can I get a second?
A second, yes.
So Brady, would this come from the Sheriff and Attorney forfeiture, or do you want this to add us, add this to our check registers?
Well, let's ask them.
Because there is roughly 5,000 as of end of 2015 between those two accounts.
We have, we have monies in our forfeiture fund to cover that and to cover something else that we're going to be asking about next week.
Okay.
Commissioner Campbell?
At least to cover the attorney portion of it.
Okay.
So Rena, I understand, if I understand, when the request was made, you did a review, so obviously if we're buying equipment, we're, we're looking at equipment that's going to serve our needs and, and is going to be a long-term investment in this regard, so...
Right.
I mean, it's very easy when you don't know equipment to go in and get something and find out it's on its way out, not on its way in. So that would be one of my questions, and, and obviously, we're exempt from the tax thing on this, so again, while we've authorized, we're going to authorize 5,000.
So, so when we got involved in this, we contacted, who is it, in Duluth?
AVI?
No.
You mean the other...
The other, yes, the group that does these interviews and...
Oh, First Witness.
First Witness in Duluth, and talked to them about equipment. And then we also checked in with Lake County, who recently replaced their system like this, and talked about what some of their requirements were. So, you know, that's, that's how we validated what we were doing. We also had a discussion about whether this information should be on the network or not, or should be more contained, and we felt that it shouldn't be on the network because of the sensitive nature. Things on a network, no matter how much you protect them, can be vulnerable to somebody getting after them, so we made... So we made some, you know, we figured out our requirements based on talking to those other groups, looking at it locally, meeting here, and then based on those requirements, Kirk called the vendors that the other two places recommended that they had worked with and just to see what it costed that year.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Molly, which one would you like to do next?
We can go with the Safe and Secure Courthouse Initiative.
Okay.
I'm bringing this to the board because I'm a representative on the statewide courthouse security work group, which is headed up by Chief Justice Lori Gilde. And the Safe and Secure Courthouse Initiative is kind of a product of our work over the last year and a half or so. We are asking the legislature to take it up as a bill and bring it forward. Essentially, what it will do is open up a pot of $20 million for grant purposes for applicants, being county governments, to apply for security improvements to their courthouses. And it's for improvements and updates. So Cook County is certainly putting a lot of money into security improvements since 2011. We can get money for updates, you know, potentially through this fund. So I'm asking if commissioners would bring this to the legislative day and talk about it with our representative. There are, so there's a one-page flyer, which gives you the very basic information, and then I also attached a number of pages of talking points, which should answer questions of yours, and I can address this further. I mean, I don't think that there are any commissioners currently on the county board who were on the county board when we had our courthouse shooting, but it certainly doesn't feel that long ago to those of us who were involved in it. And it's just, it's a real situation. We are under threat, especially those who work upstairs. But certainly other offices in the courthouse also. There's just an increase of violent acts against government workers in general, so...
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Moll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Molly. I sit on the courthouse security committee, and just, we've been looking at the remaining courthouse security issues, and there are significant ones. There will be a cost to us to actually, to continue to deal with, so I think I would be supportive, and I hope we can get it from decision-makers again in the Capitol that will be supportive also.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the flyer handout there in the lower left where it says, you know, only about one-third of Minnesota court facilities have permanent point-of-entry weapons screening, and then half have conducted security assessments, our experience forces into that. I mean, you could say it forces in it, but our response is one to be proactive and to move forward, so we made some investments. We have this, Commissioner Moll, additional to be made. One example would be up in our probation office. There are some things that were proposed there that we're still waiting to see, you know, happen. Any monies that we can get to help us, given the fact we've invested on our own, is certainly worth advocating for.
Commissioner Storley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very glad to see this come before us and all the people in Minnesota. I have spoken with you, Molly, about some things in the courthouse, especially on our Tuesdays that I'm concerned about, and so hopefully get more from the legislators and maybe some money, and we can make a list and see what we can use here for improvements.
Commissioner Severson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this sounds like a great plan to make the whole state safer, courthouses safer. And I also appreciate money that goes into equipment for screening and so forth, but I also personally value training, and I would imagine that some of this money could be used in training personnel and educating.
That's, yeah, that's one of the stated goals.
Molly, this is listed as an action item. Do you need a motion on it?
Well, I was contemplating a resolution, and, but I don't have one drafted.
You want to bring one back maybe?
I can bring one back next week.
Okay.
Madam Chair, should we just add this to our list of things to talk about at our next meeting related to AMC Legislative, and then we can...
Discuss it.
Discuss it and then potentially have a resolution to adopt the whole list of priorities for this board?
That would be great.
Then Molly only has to do one big resolution instead of five little ones?
Does that, that doesn't subvert your...
Your suggestion is what?
Is that we put together our list of priorities to bring to AMC, and that we discuss adding this to that list of priorities, but we only have one resolution to support one list of agenda items, or do you want this to be broken out?
I don't, I think that that would be fine.
Okay. Do you want to go on Title B, Law Library?
Sure. So I... The Law Library is a service that Cook County provides to its residents. The nature of a law library, a county law library, has changed quite a lot in the past 50 years. Initially, it was a service that local attorneys would come and use on a frequent basis. There were books, those books were expensive. Now, law offices generally have their own private, they pay for an online legal research service or books, or they rely on free online legal research. So in our desire to open up more space for new offices in our courthouse, the Law Library has been moved around quite a bit. And in the transition from written or printed resources for legal research into online legal research, the nature of our law library has changed quite a bit. And by statute, if you have a law library, you need a law library board of trustees. That board of trustees helps handle the revenues that come in from court administration. So if you weren't aware, there, I think we've talked about this before, but there's a law library fee added on to most cases that are filed, including speeding tickets, for example. So the board of trustees needs to manage those funds, make sure that all the legal research resources are still at the library we use. What I'm asking for is two things. I'm asking that this board appoints a county commissioner to be part of the board of trustees. The statute requires a commissioner be part of the board of trustees, and I think our last commissioner who was active in that was Sue Hinks. Second, I've attached a blank agreement with the state law library. They're asking us to choose tier one or tier two services. I have, I think in the past, we relied on tier one services, and I'm asking for tier two services this year. The law library budget will be able to absorb that if last year is any indication. At the beginning of last year, we switched from Westlaw Online Legal Research to LexisNexis Online Legal Research and saved the law library budget quite a bit. That's expected to continue to be a savings. So I'm asking whichever commissioner who is appointed to tell me what their vote would be on tier one or tier two services, because that'll be the final vote of the board of trustees, and we can execute this agreement and send it back to the state.
So first, we need to appoint, and then that appointee needs to select?
Yep, needs to just tell me what their vote is. All the other members of the board have voted for tier two services. It's a difference of about $300 between tier one and tier two. And I think that tier two services has an onsite, has one of the law librarians from the state come up here, take a look at what we have, and kind of analyze it for if it needs to be improved. And then I think this is another valuable part of that service, is they create and annually update a resource list of free, trustworthy internet legal research resources for Minnesota and locally. So that those are, those can be on our law library computer and...
And is this annual meeting? Is this a travel meeting, or is this something?
Oh, no, it's just, it would just be a local annual meeting so that our board of trustees can continue to exist.
Okay. So we will move to discussion. In your discussion, if you could state your availability or not availability for this committee, so it'll make it easier to choose. Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no real questions. It seems like a small sum to provide additional service, you know, to people who would be using the law library here. I, I'm not sure I would be the best person for this, but if there's nobody else willing, my list of recent committee appointments has grown a bit. We'll see what everybody else thinks here.
Okay, and I'm available. I have no other comment. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be interested. I did go up to use the law library. I think the law library could use some, you know, updating. I do believe that access to information, both the level of service we provide and the service that we do provide, in other words, the information that we put together, I think, and looking at the difference between the tier one and the tier two, I was going to ask, is the tier one in providing copies of statutes and things, is that a hard copy? And because those things are available online additionally, but it's a hard copy for people who want to access, similar to having law library books in which a person can use. But I think, and I've had, you know, some comments from citizens that have wanted to access the law library, and as it's moved around, whether it's available or not available, how to use it, those kinds of things are important. I think the evaluation of somebody that's informed relative to the law library and its function, which is provided in tier two, and the additional resources that are available are important components of that, so I would be in support of tier two. As I understand it, given the fact that tier two, it's 3% of the county law library annual civil fee, that's, and the difference we're looking at is $317, you know, so, for the value added, if we make it more accessible and more substantive, I think it adds value, certainly.
Commissioner Storley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I did find out where the law library was, because it keeps moving around. I was expecting a little musty room with, you know, shelves full of all these wonderful things, and it's not that at all because of so much being online already. And being a former librarian and working with Harry Potter and Winnie the Pooh, I'd be available for this.
Commissioner Severson. Can you top that?
I cannot. I cannot top that. I'm not interested in being a person in the law library, but I'm so glad that three of you are. You know, the tier two makes sense to me too, but I'm not the person who'd make that decision. Should I nominate someone? Is that sort of, I would move that Commissioner DeKirk be appointed the law librarian. Not the law librarian. Stay out of my library. I would appoint you to be law librarian, but Commissioner DeKirk to be the law librarian.
I would ask Commissioner DeKirk, I mean, being that we have a former librarian on our board, I think that...
Yeah, I'd be willing to give it up to either one of these two.
Yeah.
I mean, thank you, Jan, but...
I know that all three of you are very qualified, but, you know, you could weave some Winnie the Pooh in there. Maybe, but we do have a motion.
We do have a motion.
I'm willing to withdraw.
Okay.
If you see...
And then I would move Commissioner Storley to be...
I'd support that.
And Commissioner Campbell supports. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Storley, you need to vote.
I would vote.
Welcome to your new position.
Always. Don't bow. I don't think it's going to be excessive. Well, I would support tier two.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we're on to Item D.
Oh, Item D is bad.
Yes.
Carlin Hill has submitted for resignation for her position of crime victim witness paralegal with Cook County Attorney's Office. She accepted a different position as a therapist down in Midtown City, truly closer to her sister, and I think gets paid more commensurate to her experience and education. So that's unfortunate, but I'm just asking that the board accept that resignation and authorize us to post the position.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Severson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just move to support her resignation with regret and post the position.
Was that a motion? Because we were in discussion. Okay.
I'd very support it.
I will say, do we have a second?
Commissioner Campbell? And just so everyone has the opportunity, does anyone want to discuss this?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm sure we all object, but is there any objection to the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, that was depressing. All right, so now we are on to Commissioner Reports, Meetings, and Updates. How lively lunch today. All right, then.
Commissioners, just, I was contacted by the Lake County paper, just wondering where we were at on our priorities for legislative day, and I suggest also they contact our chair.
They contact Jeff.
Okay. But I just wanted to ask the board if they had any objections. We are not going to have that list prior to their deadline for...
For the newspaper?
Yeah. And so I told her I would let her know, just maybe in generality, some of the things that we've been talking about, our priorities, two of which we addressed today. County aid is another one that we have talked about, and the other was exempting the first $500,000 of income for small businesses. Am I missing anything?
For property tax?
Anything we can shake loose on transportation.
Yeah, and so...
Could you sit down with Jeff and kind of put that together and then respond?
Okay, will do.
Because he might have a list already started of what we've randomly thrown out during...
I'll check in with him before we leave.
Thank you. Thanks for taking that call.
Thanks for doing it.
Anything else? I will be available tomorrow unless there's a blizzard that stops me from getting home from Duluth.
For the radio?
For the radio, yes, for the radio. And I did not update you, I don't think, when I went to Futures in January, and we talked about retaining staff and how to keep staff, and it was a bit interesting because the Boomers and the Millennials hold about the same amount of our population, and there's a group in between there that's very small, and the group after seems to be very small. And we were talking a lot about flexibility and change and technology and using that to benefit us, and it was just amazing to me that there was a commissioner in there that kept saying, "We're open eight to four, we're open eight to four, we're open eight to four." And I was like, but there's still flexibility within that eight to four. And so it just, you know, it's always a good reminder when I go somewhere else and hear how other boards, to be grateful for this board and to our staff for flexibility, because we have allowed so much flexibility when we've had situations with employees that need to be able to do their work off-site or here. So I appreciate you guys immensely. I'm very glad that you don't often say eight to four, and I've lost track of you, and I see Commissioner Moll wants to talk about donkey basketball again.
We grew up with nine to five.
Nine to five.
I was being patient, but a non-eight-to-four activity, just reminding you all, donkey basketball, Thursday at the school gym, it's a great fundraiser for the band, dinner at six, seven o'clock, the action starts. We will be wearing crash helmets.
I will be at meetings, I apologize. All right, does anybody want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.